It is seven o'clock. We will reconvene in open session, this regular meeting of the Waco ISD Board of Trustees. We have been in closed session under Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code and no action was taken. We'd like to, once again, as we always do, welcome all of you who are joining us for this evening's meeting. As I tell you every month, we can't tell you how much we appreciate your interest in and your support of the Waco Public Schools. I would also remind you that we are not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals, but rather to listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. As management, it's the sole responsibility of the superintendent and his staff. And while we're extending welcomes, I also want to welcome, to his first regular meeting, the new superintendent of the Waco Public Schools, Dr. Marcus Nelson. Lastly, we don't have as large a crowd tonight, but if you do have a cellphone or other electronic device with you, if you would put that on silence or turn it off for the remainder of the meeting, we would greatly appreciate it. Also want to welcome all those watching at home on Channel 17, as Mr. Manning likes me to say, as part of our vast North American viewing audience. With that, if you will join me as we pause for a moment, as we pause for a moment of prayer, a moment of silence for prayer, contemplation, reflection, or meditation. We'll now move on to Item 5, Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Geetson.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Tonight, we're pleased to have two students from the Hillcrest Professional Development School to lead us in our pledge of allegiance. Both students are rising fifth graders. Please welcome Kayden Wormsby and McKenna Lial.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, students. Now, Dr. Amy Matthews Perez is the principal at Hillcrest. She couldn't be here tonight. Dr. Melissa Heltenberg is accompanying the students in her absence. And board members and Dr. Nelson, please gather in front of the dais for tonight's special recognition. We will begin the special recognition portion of our meeting with an introduction of our pledge leaders that you just met. They both just completed the fourth grade at Hillcrest Professional Development School. McKenna Lial says her favorite subject in school is math. In her spare time, she loves playing soccer. She also enjoys reading, storytelling, and doing do-it-yourself projects and experiments. McKenna has an artistic side as well. She was an actress in the school's Showtime Junior Production this year, and she won first place in the Waco ISD Education Foundation's Reach for the Stars Art Contest. She earned the principal's award this year for her outstanding character and academic efforts. Her teacher, Ms. Lieber, says McKenna sets the example for integrity. She's a leader who always gives 100%, and she is also one of the funniest students in the class. When McKenna grows up, she wants to be a professional soccer player, and she showed that speed getting around to the side tonight. McKenna's mother, Erica Lial, and father, Deonicio Lial, are here with us tonight. Please stand so we can recognize you as well. Thank you for raising such a wonderful daughter. All right, and Kayden Wormsby also says that his favorite subject in school is math. He enjoys playing video games, basketball, and spending time with his family, especially his brothers. He plays Little League football for the Brazos Gators, also has a knack for theater, and was an actor in the school's Showtime Junior Production this year. Kayden also earned the principal's award for his outstanding character and academic efforts. His teacher, Ms. Zerebny, says Kayden is a very hard worker and always challenges himself academically, and he's caring, kind, and goes out of his way to help others, both in and out of the classroom. When he grows up, Kayden wants to be either a police officer or an NBA basketball player. Kayden's parents, his mother, Chandra Carter, and his father, Benjamin Wormsby, are here as well. And very soon, Kayden's father is a member of the U.S. Army. He'll be deployed to Korea for a year, so it's an extra special time for us to have Kayden and his father here tonight. Please stand so that we may recognize the embrace. Thank you for your service, and thank you for sharing your son with us tonight. We also want to say thank you to our adopt-a-school partner, Barnes &amp; Noble Booksellers, for donating the books that our pledge leaders are receiving tonight as a gift. And Waco ISD has a long tradition of success at history fair competitions, and the quest for gold has placed dozens of Waco ISD students as national finalists over the past decade. Early in the fall, more than a half million students nationwide choose their topics and begin their research for the next year's event. Of those, about 45,000 are from the state of Texas, and Waco ISD students compete at the heart of Texas Regional History Fair at Baylor in February. Finishing first or second there advances them to the Texas History Day in Austin, and by finishing first or second in Austin, they advance to the National History Day in College Park, Maryland. And this year, two of our students from Waco ISD were among the 3,000 nationwide who advanced to the national competition. This is no small feat, after half a million students start the competition. Atlas Academy and at Tennyson, eighth grader Neil Dupuis placed first at the regional competition, won first place at the state competition, and qualified for the national competition in the individual performance junior division with his act "A Spoke in the Wheel" on German theologian Dietrich Bonhoeffer. Neil's the son of Mandy and trustee Kerry Dupuis. He'll be a ninth grader at Waco High School next year. And Waco High School sophomore Gloria Canatsa won second place in the individual documentary senior division at the regionals, second place at state, and qualified for nationals with her documentary video on veteran and civil rights advocate Dr. Hector P. Garcia entitled "Relentless: A Texan's Stand for the American Dream." Gloria is the daughter of Julietta and Kyle Canatsa. Congratulations to both of you. Waco ID is proud of you two students and all the hard work you did in representing us at the nationals. We'd like to have Julietta and Kyle stand up as well for a round of applause, and also Congratulations on getting to nationals. And also, the students are fortunate to have support from some of our very best social studies and research teachers. Christine Williams and Shannon Lyles are not present tonight, but Waco ISD's social studies content specialist, Dr. Robert Golinsky, is. And Robert, stand up and wave so we can see you. And if you recall, last month, we recognized Waco ISD's Outstanding Elementary Teacher of the Year, but our Waco ISD Outstanding Secondary Teacher of the Year could not be here because he was out of town as a chaperone on a school field trip. So tonight, it is his turn to shine in our spotlight. And just as a refresher, this process began in December with 24 outstanding teachers representing each of our campuses, and following that recognition, the teachers were invited to submit an essay about their calling to be an educator. And from those essays, a panel of educators determined our finalists and then made classroom visits to decide on the final two teachers who would be crowned as the Waco ISD Teachers of the Year. And tonight, we are pleased to introduce our Waco ISD District Secondary Teacher of the Year, James Villa. He's an eighth-grade science teacher at Tennyson Middle School. Now, before the school year ended, we continued our tradition of making surprise notifications with the TV camera rolling, so let's take a moment and take you inside Mr. Villa's classroom.
Congratulations, Teacher of the Year! I think Mr. Hartley's got something for you. Come around here.
I'm stunned.
What, tell us?
She knows that I'm terrible at making speeches. I tried when she nominated me, and it didn't work out so hot.
Well, obviously, the award is not for making speeches. The award is for excellent teaching. So, do you qualify for that one?
I think so.
Definitely, definitely so.
Why do you think he was named District Secondary Teacher of the Year?
I think Mr. Villa is innovative. He goes above and beyond. He's tried this really new, great new concept this year of doing a flipped classroom where he has videotaped himself. So he says he's not good at speeches, but he's good at YouTube videos. And he has the kids watch those so that he can have more time in class for them to do hands-on learning, and the kids have responded beautifully to it. And so he is sort of that pilot program for us to now expand that onto some other classrooms, and it's just, the kids adore him, and he's just a great person and a great teacher, and will do anything and go above and beyond.
Is that true?
Well, thank you, Ms. Hall. You know, this is really special, partly because it's coming back to Tennyson. I look around every day, and there are tons of teachers that work so hard and do so much. So it's good to represent my school as well.
Well, we're going to talk to some of those teachers and see what they think about this award, okay?
I've got some people to suggest and some to avoid.
All right, well, Mr. Villa has taught for four years, and another round of applause for him. As the 2017 District Secondary Teacher of the Year, Mr. Villa is receiving a cash award of $1,000 sponsored by Richard Carr Motors, and he'll be presented that check by Richard Carr and Mary Frances Carr Ellis in loving memory of Mr. Gordon Roundtree Sr. Mary Frances, of course, the daughter of Colette and Richard Carr, and is the granddaughter of Mr. Gordon Roundtree Sr. Congratulations once again, and thank you, Richard Carr Motors, to Mr. James Villa. And that concludes our special recognition for this evening.
All right, next item on the agenda is Audience for Guests. My understanding, no one has signed up, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. I don't believe I've been asked to pull anything from the consent agenda. Is there anything anybody would like pulled? All right, then I will entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda. Thank you, Ms. Perez. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, the consent agenda is adopted. We'll move on to Item 10, Discussion of Possible Action. Item 10A will be the discussion of the self-funded group health plan, and I don't know if that's going to be Ms. Davis or Ms. Bateo.
Let me make an introduction.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Doctor Nelson.
As Ms. Bateo makes her way to the presentation station, I did want to confirm that a team of us this morning had an opportunity to meet with two of our outstanding association representatives, one from AFT and one from TSTA, Ms. Rosalinda Silva and Ms. Coach Pam Fisher. And so they gave us an earful about this topic. It was a very effective meeting. We went over the concerns of the employees, and we wanted to communicate at the onset that for most employees, you won't see a difference. If this board approves this recommendation, then we'll be going with United Healthcare, and when you need to go take care of your medical business, you'll go do that just as we did when you were, when we were fully funded. So we want to emphasize that to employees. Now, there's a host of other conversations dealing with health insurance that my public commitment is to engage our employees, when we start talking about the plan and the employer contribution and some, a host of other aspects of health insurance for employees. So this does bring us a significant savings. I mentioned this at our workshop. In districts I've worked in other places, most recently in Laredo, we went to a self-insured model, and it has been very successful. And it does require a level of leadership from our insurance team. I'm confident, Ms. Boyett, Ms. Fledgling, and the entire team up to and including Ms. Davis and Mrs. Bateo, myself, are committed to making this successful. I'd like to thank our insurance consultants for their guidance, and with that, if there's no other comments or questions from the trustees, I'll introduce Ms. Bateo.
Thank you, Dr. Nelson. Ms. Bateo.
President Atkins, Dr. Nelson, and members of the board, thank you for allowing me to present this topic to you. This has been a conversation that started pretty much a year ago. We knew that we had to do something in our district to have better control of our plans, and so we hired Gallagher as a consultant back in January of this year. We had a pretty defined timeline of what the next steps would be. We did go out for bid and solicited proposals back in March, and then we, when we went out for bid, we asked for fully funded and self-funded arrangements. We also asked for best and final offers on the fully funded side, and that was, it was very clear that we were looking at an increase of up to 18% if we continued with the same format we have as a fully funded plan. So with consultation with Gallagher, we are recommending that we move forward with a self-funded arrangement. And so you have a PowerPoint in your folder, and we are going to go over some of the pros and cons of self-funding. So first on the pros, with self-funding health insurance, we have more control of our plans through benefit designs. We have the ability to design the plans that would be beneficial for employees and yet cost-effective for them as well, as well as for the district, because we realize there has to be a balance. We have the ability to access claims data, and let me point out, when I say access claims data, we still are bound to comply with HIPAA. The health insurance company is bound to comply with HIPAA as well as the employer, so employees can rest assured that their information will remain confidential. Also, on the financial management side and cash flow, that's a pro when you go self-funded. There's also additional savings through reduced administrative expenses, the elimination of premium taxes, lower claims liability in Goodyear's, of course, and then carved-out PBM, which is removing the health plan as intermediary, I'm sorry, and resulting in better rates. Currently, with our health plan, our fully insured health plan, we have no other option but to take the prescription plan that comes with United Healthcare. But going self-funded will allow us to use a different company so we can get better discounts and benefits. The cons of going self-funded is that, yeah, you could have a bad year where claims are volatile and there is potential for increased liability, but we have stop-loss premiums that will not true up until the second year. So, you know, it's kind of hard to forecast, but once you get to that second year, you really kind of see a true picture. Also, there is more work for the ISD staff. The benefits office will have more duties and, as well as the finance department, when we go self-funded. That's a reason why we also have an ASO when we go self-funded, and that would be United Healthcare, that will process the claims and still answer all the customer service calls. We must commit for two years with the 12-12 contract, or if not renewing, we must purchase runout protection at the end of the contract. And on the next slide, the claim cost and discount, which is a big, important piece, because 85% of the plan cost is in claims expense, discounts become the single most important factor in evaluating long-term costs to the district. So the broad network discount ranking was United Healthcare came in first, and this is important to us because we want to make sure that our employees have access to various healthcare providers, not just locally, but also if they have children in college or if they are on vacation in another state. We want to make sure that they're going to have access to healthcare. Everyone knows that when you go to the emergency room, it is very expensive. It's going to be expensive for the health plan, and it'll be expensive, or for the district going self-funded, and it will be expensive for the employee. So we want to minimize that cost for both the district and for the employee. As a result, the final determinant factor was the results of the network discounts as substantiated through the claims, through the claims repricing. Scott &amp; White discounts were not as deep as United Healthcare for the broader Cigna wrap around network, and there were a significant number of claims that fell out of network. And if you go out of network, then of course you're going to be paying more out-of-pocket. While this does not result in additional cost to the district, it would result in lesser benefit, I'm sorry, in a lesser benefit and balance billing to the employee. And I'm going to ask Mike from, okay, here we go, to go over Slide 4.
Okay.
Go ahead, yeah.
Go ahead and change the slide for me, if you don't mind.
Oh, sorry.
There we go.
There you go.
All right. Good evening, Mr. President, Dr. Nelson, board. We did an extensive evaluation of both the fully insured and self-funded responses, and as Ms. Bateo noted, the fully insured increase would have represented an 18% increase, and in a fully insured world, those are fixed costs. We would have incurred 18% more in expenses next year than we are this year to continue with the same plans. And so that's when self-funding really became the option of choice here, because we were looking for an opportunity to avoid that type of an increase, and the way to do that is through self-funding. And in what you see here in the illustration, in the top section, is the three finalists were United Healthcare, Blue Cross, and Scott &amp; White. And as we look through from the top down, the final responses ultimately from all three carriers were best and final offers matching the current plan design. So all the information that we're looking at is under the assumption we're not changing plan designs, okay? So the plan options that we would have today is what we would look at for next year, and as we go through the process, we would determine, you know, what our budget would be in that self-funded environment to ensure that we could actually afford the plans that we have today. And we looked at the ability of all vendors to do a dialysis carve-out. We spend a significant amount of money through this plan in dialysis, and there are opportunities to carve that out of the plan and reimburse that lesser covered expenses and no out-of-pocket expenses to covered individuals if we can make that happen in this area. And then telemedicine through a company called ReadyMD, and in this chart, we know UHC can accommodate that. Blue Cross won't. We're not certain if Scott &amp; White would. When we get down to the fixed costs here, these are for the self-funded administration of the plan, so whoever's awarded this program will be responsible for processing our claims and answering our customer service calls, okay? So when we look at the administration fees and stop-loss fees, those are the fixed costs. And when you're a self-funded plan, you have exposure in two areas. You have fixed administration costs, which includes your stop-loss reinsurance, and then you have the actual claims themselves, because you're going to pay for the claims. And so when we look at that across the board, on the total fixed cost, administrative fees and stop-loss reinsurance combined, United Healthcare comes in at 1.936, Blue Cross at 2.495, and then Scott &amp; White at 1.662 if we went with their broad network, or 1.337 if we go with their narrow network, okay? The difference being that in a narrow network environment, we'd be restricted to the Baylor-Scott &amp; White providers. If we go with their broad network, we would have the Baylor-Scott &amp; White providers locally, and then outside of this area, we would have that Cigna wrap network. And the Cigna network isn't as extensive as the Blue Cross and United networks, and that's what puts us at risk for people using out-of-network providers, because they just have a smaller network. The maximum attachment point, what we're talking about here is the stop-loss reinsurance, okay? And so basically what happens is, in a self-funded environment, you, as the employer and the owner of the self-funded plan, you take risk at both the individual claimant level and then also the total plan level. And what we're talking about here is the amount of risk you would take overall for the plan. It's called the maximum aggregate attachment point, and it's at that point that the plan no longer has the financial risk, and the stop-loss reinsurance company now becomes the payer, okay? So in essence, we would pay the claims up until whatever attachment point we are working with, and then once we start paying beyond that, we get reimbursed by that stop-loss reinsurance carrier, okay? And so that maximum attachment point with United is 10.603, Blue Cross is 8.549, Scott &amp; White is 10.280. And this is a number that's determined by the actuaries at these insurance companies that say, based on what they believe they know about you as a group, based on the age, gender, and geographical location of our members, and the utilization experience you all have had in the past, this is the number at which they think you're not going to hit. Because if you hit this number, that means that they have to start paying, and they don't like to pay, okay? So they're going to set that number high enough that they don't think you're going to hit it. But if you do, it's going to be because you had catastrophic claims, all right? Very rarely in our world, from the Gallagher side, do we see our groups hit that maximum aggregate attachment point, and again, if they do, they've had catastrophic claims. And typically, we've received benefits from the reinsurance carry on both the individual level and then on the aggregate plan level as well. So as we continue further down, we combine those fixed costs with that maximum attachment point, and that represents your total risk. That's worst-case scenario. If we had a catastrophic claim year, that combined figure is the most the district would be on the hook for, okay? So remember, though, that maximum aggregate attachment point is a projection, again, based on the makeup of our group. So we went through the repricing exercise, and we primarily did that to determine who had the best discounts, because again, the largest component of what we're actually funding for here isn't the administrative fees, it's the claims themselves. And so when you look at claim costs in that section where the claims were repriced, they took a year's worth of claims and shared that information with all of these providers. Those providers went through and repriced those claims to reflect the eligible amounts of those claims. So across the board here, in the repricing exercise, United Healthcare was the lowest at 8.99, Blue Cross at 9.03 was second, Scott &amp; White, depending upon whether we go broad or narrow network, was 10.4 to 10.644, okay? So when we're looking at this from our perspective at Gallagher, we understand the attachment point, that's the insurance you're buying for the large claims. But when we look at what we're really going to be spending here, we're going to be spending money on the claims and on the fixed costs. So when we add the claims, the repriced claims, to the fixed costs, now all of a sudden, United Healthcare is the carrier of choice, and that's because in the areas where we're actually going to spend money, they came in the lowest. So our recommendation is United Healthcare for the financial reasons, but in addition to that, for the transitional reasons, because quite honestly, whether the plan is self-funded or fully insured... quite honestly, whether the plan is self-funded or fully insured is going to be transparent to your covered individuals. They're not going to know which bank account the check is being cut from. That's the only thing that changes by going self-funded, is where the check comes from. If we stay with United Healthcare, your employees already are familiar with United Healthcare. Their healthcare providers know they have United Healthcare today. And as important as any of this, in that pharmaceutical world, when we make that move and we separate the pharmacy plan out, we'll already, we'll still have our experience with United, but we'll be able to partner with United with the new vendor on the prescription side and coordinate the prescription utilization with the medical information to work from a disease management perspective with respect to the group, to identify gaps in care and things like that. So the way we manage the plan on the clinical side and the financial side is actually going to be enhanced because we're going to have access to more information than we've had in the past.
Mr. President?
Self-funded plan.
Yeah, Dr. Nelson.
Thank you, sir. So one of the things that came up in our conversation with the Teacher Association was this perception that as a self-insured model, we were going to violate HIPAA laws. And so everyone's medical situation would now go through HR, and HR would be, and so we just want to emphatically clarify that we're not violating any federal law.
What I can tell you very simply is this, the HR people, they don't want to know this stuff. They've got enough to do, quite honestly. And the only time we ever get involved in individual cases is on our side of it, the Gallagher carrier side. We address that type of stuff on our end. Typically, the way it comes to us is somebody at the district calls us and says, hey, we know we've got a person that's in the hospital because we were there with them, and we just want to make sure you guys are getting them taken care of. So we're running to United Healthcare to say, hey, have we gotten the authorization done for that inpatient stay? Are we up to speed clinically with this patient? Is there anything that's outstanding that hasn't been addressed from a clinical perspective? Because we want to make sure people are getting the appropriate access to care.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
All right. Anything else for the initial presentation?
Anything else you'd like to add?
Well, I also included a slide on the prescription piece. Is that the prescription piece? Yep, that is. So as you'll see, that for our prescription benefits management company, the carve-out, when you hear PBM carve-out, we are asking that you approve ESI Tasbe collective, and that's Express Scrips. They have the better overall savings for the district. And then on the next slide, these are just, again, and we're probably just reiterating some of the things we've already said, but these are the factors for our recommendation, and that is broader network with highest discounts. United Healthcare offered a three-year rate guarantee on administrative service fees, which is, it's good for us, and a rate pass for the first month in administrative fees. Continuation with United Healthcare equals stability, which equals minimal disruption to employees. And if the $150,000 claim limit is reached, the stop-loss with United Healthcare is immediate, and the district does not need to front money on claims. Provider network remains the same, which means less confusion for employees. And again, Express Scrips offers the greater rebates on prescriptions, which lower total liability to the health plan. Employees will receive ID cards from United Healthcare, just like they have now. They'll present those when they go to their appointment or to pick up their prescription. And actually, on their card, it'll say Express Scrips, so the pharmacy will know. Customer service and claims will still be serviced by United Healthcare. And in fact, out of 588 respondents in a recent benefit survey, eighty-three point five percent of our employees said that they were satisfied with the customer service that United Healthcare offers. This is a new benefit opportunity as well, because we will look at add-ons such as, like Mike said, telemed. And we probably haven't explained that yet, but telemed is where, it's really just allowing the employee to have accessibility to healthcare without having to leave home or work. So if they have an itchy throat, or, you know, they're having some kind of symptom, then they can actually get online and get in front of a camera, and there is an online doctor who can give them a diagnosis and give them a prescription. So, and we can also look at plan designs as far as maybe even lower copays if they do telemed. So those are just...
Those doctors, by the way, are in Texas positions, in case anybody...
Good point.
We get those questions.
Good point.
Absolutely.
And also, you know, the ability to continue with wellness programs. We believe that a wellness program is important for our population. We want to keep reminding employees that they need to take care of themselves and stay well, and that's a big part of us being able to offer a good health plan at an affordable rate. So again, the mitigating factors are best discounts and the dialysis carve-out.
Okay. I know a number of board members have questions. Before we get to that, I just want to thank both Gallagher and the HR department for taking what was last week, I think 220-something pages, and boiling it down to six pages of what we really, I mean, being very succinct, and it's highlighting the real factors and making the determination. And I appreciate both the thoroughness of last week's presentation and really highlighting what was significant this week. So thank you all for doing that. Mr. Manning?
On this telemedicine, I'm sorry, but you're going to have a two-way talk with a doctor, and you have to explain your condition, and they can prescribe, to a certain, I mean, to a certain degree, I'm assuming?
Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
They can't prescribe narcotics. They can't prescribe narcotics.
Okay, all right.
They can't prescribe mental health medications without a face-to-face, okay? So this particular telemedicine vendor can service in two forms. They can either do an actual telephone call, and we actually won't get charged for telephone calls to them, by the way. But if we do a face-to-face encounter via Skype or a similar method, then that's when we actually incur a utilization expense. So we'll have some people that actually call this telemedicine provider, and neither the patient nor the plan incurs an expense, because they're just calling them, and they can address the issue over the phone. But if they do that face-to-face, it's because the physician believes that the patient's condition requires that before they can treat.
Well, I mean, of course, the common cold or allergies and stuff like that, those are simple stuff. But now, my knee's been hurting for the last three or four days.
Right? They've got a list of questions for you. That's where that would start, literally. They would go down a list of questions based on your symptoms. They would triage you and make a determination as to whether or not they could treat you over the phone.
But then at some point, they may say, no, well, you need to get you...
Yeah, they may say, listen, you need to go to urgent care or the emergency room because, you know, we think you might be having a heart attack, right? Something like that. So, sure. Absolutely.
And again, that's just an option.
Yep.
So we will be talking to the insurance committee about whether they would like to see something like that.
All right. Manning, is that, answer your question? Mr. Perez?
Ms. Mateo, is this going to be an extra cost, or are we going to save money on this?
We are hoping, we are hoping to save money. It just depends on if we have a good year or not. And that's why when we were going over slide four, we saw the worst-case scenario, which we do not expect to reach that limit.
Now, so right now, you can't give us a estimation, say within five years, how much would we save or anything like that?
We could give a projection right now based on what limited data we have on you all, and it wouldn't be self-funded data. It would basically be your age, gender, and geographical location, the same type of stuff we use to do manual underwriting with you all to project those premiums. And it wouldn't really be a reflection ultimately of anything more than what happens out there in the insurance industry. We'd probably end up projecting you guys to spend, you know, on average, fifteen percent more year over year over year, because we just don't have that self-funded data. Now, after this first year, we will be projecting five years out for you all the time so that you all can see what it looks like. And what this is really about is putting ourselves in a position to provide a sustainable benefit plan to our employees here. Because in the world we're in today, at the end of the year, the insurance company looks at the ledger, and if they didn't make enough money on us, they raise those rates. Okay? And we don't control that, and the only way we can control it is to accept lesser benefits as a trade-off, right? And so what we do in the self-funded world is we say, hey, this is our budget. Gallagher, tell us what kind of plans we can have for this kind of money, and then protect us from that by setting the rates appropriately so that we fund our plan properly. And as long as we have the financial fortitude to make those hard decisions to fund the plan properly, and then on the years that we have good years, we bank that money so that we have that reserve, so that when we have bad years, we can offset some of those with our reserve, then we've got an opportunity, like I said, to create a sustainable benefit plan environment. Right now, we're reactionary based on what kind of rate increase we're going to get the next year.
You know, I think the other answer trustee Perez should, that we should put in the record is, obviously, we're trying to look for cost-saving measures all throughout our organization, and we think this is one of our major cost-saving initiatives. Now, one of the things we do not have control over is federal legislation on healthcare. And if you look at that over the last 24 months, they've basically hamstrung organizations who are, anyone with 50 employees or more. Now it's having to look at the Affordable Healthcare Act and adjust the opportunities and plans. So yes, we anticipate doing what we need to do, and as this gentleman said so eloquently, trying to prepare for a rainy day, but the answer to your question is, there's legislation on the House and the Senate in Washington right now that will change our whole plan. And we'll be right here explaining how we have to commit more money because we're required to do this, or required to do that. So we're going to try and save money, but we, you know, we kind of got to, we got to work with our state, mainly federal legislators, to try and impact healthcare.
And I did want to add one thing, because the $12.6 million number, it looks like a scary number, but currently, between our contributions and employee contributions, we've put $11 million into the plan. So we're really talking about a $1.6 million exposure over what we do. So...
Well said. That's a good point. Thank you.
It's not quite as scary when you say 1.6.
Which is less than the 18% increase you would have had if you just stepped forward.
Sure. Yes, sir. Obviously, as you alluded to during the presentation, there was a large drop, at least for two of the plans, between the maximum attachment point and then when we ran through the repricing model.
Right.
And what we anticipate the real claims cost would be. Explain for me again what the repricing model was based on. Did we run full year's claims, actual claims for this year or last year?
I'm not sure the specific time period. It would have been probably the most recent 12 months as of the time, the most recent 12 months as of the time they pulled them together.
And so hypothetically, we took those, the actual claims for the past 12 months, submitted those through, ran them through their pricing model to find out what the actual cost would be to us, and that's where those numbers came from.
Exactly.
Great. Okay. Just to make sure those were actual claims that we ran through there.
And part of the reason for those results is, when you look at United Healthcare, they had deeper discounts, but they also had a higher percentage in network providers than, say, Scott &amp; White, who had a lesser network.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Mr. Sykes?
Yes, just two quick points. You mentioned there's the potential then at the end of the plan year that we would accrue some carryover funds into, like, a fund balance?
Right. So in other words, we're going to fund the plan to maximum liability, and, which again, we obviously don't believe we're going to hit. And so assuming that we don't hit that, whatever's left over stays with the benefit plan for next year. Ideally, we would recommend that you maintain a 25% corridor, in other words, of expected claims and admin fees. So that way, at the end of the year, we have 25% more in our budget than we think we're going to spend, and that works out great when you spend 25% more than you had in your budget. And that's really, you know, that having that corridor allows you to take this type of performance on rates and kind of do this with it.
Do you have any experience, I guess, statistics perhaps, that says, three out of five, five out of eight, how often you have this carryover?
Well, the statistic is actually the reverse of that. You can count on one bad year out of every five.
Okay. All right.
And we do already have a fund balance in our insurance fund, because we currently have workers' comp and our unemployment in an internal service fund. And we have a million-dollar fund balance there now.
Okay.
So that will also help offset anything, so...
One other quick question then regarding the cons. I don't know if these are listed in any kind of particular preconceived priority or anything, worst to best, or whatever, but if that's not the case, if these are just general cons overall, I'm drawn to the more worked ISD staff. Red flag. I mean, savings are one thing, but how do you accommodate the increased workload?
I'd like to jump in and just tell you, from our perspective, she's going to pick up the phone and call Gallagher, okay? Because that's what we're here for, is to assist...
Call the friend?
Right, pretty much, yeah, exactly. Because that's what we're here to do, is help, not just with the implementation, but the ongoing administration of your self-funded plan. You guys hired us to be the experts. That's what we're here for. It's not just about the idea that we can manage an RFP for you and help you identify the best quote. We're here to make sure that throughout the year, we're managing with your team here to ensure that we're getting the biggest bang for our buck.
Well, my concern is it equates to potentially increased dollars from a staffing team.
Right. And so, and Ms. Mateo, I'm sure is going to speak to this, but what's going to happen is the nature of their jobs is going to change a little bit. It'll go, it'll be a little bit more of the managing on the financial side, because again, we're using your bank account, right? So we're going to have a little more, you know, checks and balances that are going to occur within the district. And then from a planning perspective, you guys will actually be a lot more engaged in the planning piece when it comes to, you know, the quarterly reviews, and then when we're six months away from renewal, having those discussions in conjunction with your budget discussions about what are we doing for next year? How are we performing so far? What's it going to look like for next year? And so we'll work with the team to, you know, identify how the plan's performing, make our recommendations every year, and throughout the year, just to keep you all apprised of what's happening with the plan financially and also from a perception perspective, because that's the other piece of this. This is a part of the compensation package for employees in this district. And if we aren't offering a best-in-class benefit plan, we'll suffer from it perceptually.
Okay, thank you. This may be an unfair question, Dr. Nelson. I know you've had experience moving to the self-funded plan. To follow up on Mr. Sykes' question, in your prior district, did you have to, did you recognize significant staffing increases to administer it internally?
Absolutely not. So, for the record, it's more work because all of the, as this gentleman said, everything now that we're bringing in terms of quarterly reviews, and I already know, well, I know this board well enough to know that that's going to have to involve a conversation with our insurance committee, with teacher representatives, and we want to know, you know, how people feel. And when we bring recommendations, we want to bring the board options based on live, relevant data. And you start developing your plans, you know, the biggest example I can think of is the employer contribution. Now, I love that idea because when you compare it to some of your other ideas, increasing the employer contribution is cheaper, but I'm not the one making this decision. So we definitely will involve, it's more work because we want, as he said so well, perception. So, you know, there's already been some perceptions about this move that we had to clarify, and that'll be the, that'll be the way it rolls for a while, but no, I don't, I know that Ms. Fledgling and Ms. Boyet, they're, they're ready to hammer, as they say, this concept.
Well, the one thing I would add to all of that is very simply this. The most valuable asset that a self-funded benefit plan can have is an educated end-user. And I've been in this business since the mid-'80s, and education is the thing we're worse at. Because most people don't find out about how the benefit plan works until they've already incurred an expense and they've got an explanation of benefits that said, we're not paying, right? We can't let that happen anymore.
Well, and in addition to that, the other problem that we have, which I'm, one, probably the biggest example of this, is we've got to, we've got to recommit to our wellness plan. And we've really got to get every employee thinking about ways to be... And we've really got to get every employee thinking about ways to become more healthy. And I need to be, I, it's a sensitive conversation with me as well, but it doesn't matter. We really all have to be, we're self-insured now. So now, if we're not making strides to think about wellness, well, then it will manifest itself in our budget. So everybody buy some tennis shoes.
And just to follow up, when you say, you've been in this since mid-'80s, and education is what we're worst at, you're talking about the insurance industry, not, not the public education folks. Okay. Yeah, good. Just wanted, wanted to make sure that was, wanted to make sure that was clear.
Thank you for clarifying that. A little detained about that.
All right. All right, any other questions from the board?
Just a quick.
Mr. Dupree, you want to pull the mic towards you?
Yeah, I'm sorry. The prescription drug benefit here, is that the product of something similar to the medical claims repricing methodology?
Yeah, so Express Scripts through the Tasby Coalition is a standalone pharmacy benefit manager, and the part of the exercise for that, for their submission, or anybody that wanted to administer the pharmacy benefit plan had to reprice claims. And so.
We sent them a list of medications we bought last year, and said, "What did you sell these to us?"
And so essentially, ESI is the carrier of choice, because we pay them less for the little green pill.
Now, you're saying, we're projecting out three years. Do we have any sort of guarantee? Surely they're not warranting or guaranteeing prices for three years.
Again, based on what things cost today, which we all know, the pharmaceutical industry is like Wall Street, the prices on drugs literally change daily. Okay? But what they know about those drugs and the way those drugs have been trending from a price perspective, and that particular RFP response was reviewed by our pharmacy team, which it does include pharmacists. Yeah, it's kind of unique.
What do pharmacists know?
Having a pharmacist team with pharmacists is a good thing to have.
Okay. All right. If you insist. All right, thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Manning.
Is there anything off the top of your head? I know I've been reading some stories about some illnesses that are above and beyond the call of duty. Is there anything that this plan would just tell somebody, "No, we can't cover you"? I mean, you know, of course, like something, illness, what, what you call it? Yeah, pre-existing.
We're still living under the rules of the original Affordable Care Act, under the Obama administration, okay? So we can't have pre-existing condition limitations. We have to provide what are called, what's called minimum essential coverage. And so that provides coverage for, you know, it's a full major medical plan, it's not a limited benefit plan, no. We're going to be providing the same types of, the same things we cover today under the fully insured plan will be what we cover under the self-funded plan, absolutely.
If it was covered last year, it would be covered this year. If it wasn't covered last year, it won't be covered this year.
Well, no.
It's identical.
But there's, yeah, I understand your question, though. There isn't a disease state that we're saying this plan's not going to cover as of 1-1, no?
Well, no, I, I was reading some story the other day about some young child had some disease that's one, and 10,000, 100,000 kids got in the, in the drugs for $750,000 a year, or something like that.
Let's talk about medication real quick. There are experimental meds out there.
Right.
That haven't been FDA-approved. Your plan doesn't pay for those today, and it won't pay for them tomorrow.
All right, other questions or comments? All right, Ms. Patel, the administrative recommendation then is?
Awarding the self-funded major medical health insurance administrative services and stop-loss insurance to United Health Care and the pharmacy benefits management to Express Scripts effective January 1, 2018.
All right, I'll entertain a motion. Thank you, Mr. President. I'm nervous there. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. T. Kell. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
That brings us to item 11, reports and discussion. First is the discussion on Lone Star Governance and Goal Progress Measure 3.3 on Career and Technology Education. Who's presenting that? Is that going to be you, Dr. Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. President. We've provided background information on the board time use tracker. We have our career and technical education director here, Ms. Nancy McCowen.
Donna McKenna.
Donna McKenna, sorry. I apologize. And our assistant area superintendent, Dr. Robin McDurham.
Yeah.
And, did I say it right? Good, good. And so basically, to be honest with you, the board president and I had a, a conference with Deputy Commissioner A.J. Crable in several districts in a similar academic achievement scenario earlier this week. And it was a very informative conversation regarding Lone Star Governance, and particularly the board time use tracker. We heard from the Midland Independent School District Board President and interim superintendent about ways that we can tighten up our Lone Star Governance process. And I know that this board was kind of waiting on my arrival to really get organized on how we monitor this, how we measure our development. And I know that the Texas Education Agency is excited to see us be a model for other school districts in the state. So, you know, if there's no, if there's any questions about career and technical education, which is what we're here to discuss tonight, we'll be happy to present them. Ms. Donna, I don't know if you want to come to the podium, but really, we need some time to kind of organize our board presentations. And I know I have some ideas on career and technical education funding, career and technical education opportunities that are already in place, and really, we're preparing that for July, and that'll be part of our Lone Star Governance in more detail. But if there's any comments or questions, we're prepared to answer them today.
Are there any questions on this goal progress measure?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, Ms. Sykes.
For all practical purposes, it appears that we're at our goal, that we've identified for 2020.
We, and that has a lot to do with House Bill 5, the passage of House Bill 5 and students getting the endorsements. And so we have more students who are completing that capstone or advanced CTE course.
So is there room at the top?
There's always room at the top. You can always get better.
Do we need to revise this?
I think we need to revise it, yes, sir.
We'll bring that in July.
I think we should look at maybe perhaps where those, the different areas where the capstones are being completed, perhaps in the academies, as opposed to one broad measure. I think we could look at that as a measure. But a lot of this, a lot of the districts don't even, weren't even as high as we were when we started that particular measure. A lot of districts are, you know, in the area are way below even the 60 number. So I think that perhaps we could look at dividing them, like how are the automotive academy, are they completing capstones? And maybe look at each academy separate. And there's room for improvement there, I'm sure.
I, I certainly agree with the opportunity to move it forward.
Yes, sir.
Let me follow up on that, because after the conference call that Dr. Nelson and I were on, Deputy Commissioner Crable contacted me on the way we're looking at goal progress measures and wanting to know if we had examples from some of our televised meetings that he could share through YouTube videos with other boards on the way we're spending our time on goal progress measures. And I told him candidly, we'd run into a bit of a problem the last couple of months, because we exceeded, performance had exceeded where we thought we would be at this time. And so other than saying, "Great job, keep up the good work," there wasn't a lot of discussion. And as a result, you know, I think three prior meetings, our time spent was 56%, 43%, over 30%. The last two meetings, it's been less than 10%. Deputy Commissioner Crable did have some insights, and he said, "Yeah, one thing we made one thing about doing is, first off, when we congratulate staff and tell them what a great job they're doing, and you are, and we appreciate really helping us meet that." He said, "Maybe it's an opportunity to explore what strategies that allowed us to hit this performance measure are transferable to some of the areas where we're struggling? And are there things that we can learn from these successes that we might be able to apply in other areas of the curriculum?" And I think that's something that is a fair inquiry when we, when we're exceeding, you know, this is the third time in a row where we've met where we are. And the other thing he said is to follow up on what Alan just said, and that is, if our performance measures are not requiring change in adult conduct, or if we're exceeding them, then we may need to revisit those progress measures, either the areas we're measuring or moving the expectation higher. And I told him I thought that was also good insight, and I would share all that with the board. And so I think, you know, this is the framework we've adopted, this is the framework we're willing to take to the community to say, you know, this is the role of the board to ensure we're making progress on these specific goals. And I think maybe broadening that discussion when we have these moments of success to say, "What did we learn here?", and having staff ready to answer those types of questions in the future would probably be helpful. The other thing I want to say, to follow up on Dr. Nelson's comments, that conference call was really helpful, and had some great strategies that I think we can discuss at our next workshop about ways to get the community involved and to get them to buy in, not only to the goals, but to the framework that we as a district are implementing to ensure that adult behavior transforms into better student outcomes. And so it was a good discussion. I think we got some good ideas that, some things we can do even better. Although he, he's very complimentary, he knew we were making a lot of progress, and that's why he asked us about videos of what we're doing in this area, but obviously the things we do better.
Glad, Mr. Patel, to help us.
All right, are there other specific questions on the career and technology progress measure?
Mr. President, I got a question.
Ms. Manning.
Is this the proper time to ask what is the progress of the, what, the Maryre, the...
The, the Guam program?
No, 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 the one, the one with building houses.
Building trades.
Yes, it's a part of Guam, building trades. Building trades is going quite well. We have plenty of students to come. We are currently, our biggest need is the teacher. And so we are putting a blitz out in the media to get that teacher. So that's really our biggest concern. If you saw Sunday's paper, we, Mary Center ran a, developed a really good ad for me and we ran. So we're looking for that perfect teacher, and...
This is going to be, this coming to school year, right?
Yes, sir. And so we're still looking. It's not, I'm not panic-stricken yet, but we are looking for that teacher. With the passage of the House bill with interns that Doc Anderson and I wrote together, to get those interns out in the community, we're excited, because that's the four, the third leg of that program, so that we're ready to go three years now to get those interns out building houses. So we're excited about that. So everything seems to be moving forward. We have students, we just need that perfect teacher, and...
That's going to increase enrollment at Guam?
It will increase enrollment at Guam, yes.
You know, approximately how?
I don't have those numbers in front of me that...
Bring it in July.
Okay.
I'll bring them in July. I don't have them off the top of my head, because they were, you know, when you finish out the year, we're refining which of those kids are coming to those academies from each school. So I don't have those in front of me, but I'll be glad to bring them in July.
Would you be glad to be fine?
I'd be glad to.
Ms. T. Kell.
Ms. T. Kell. Is the, is that a typo? Should it be May 1, 2017?
What does it say?
1617 progress measure checkpoint outcome, the 94%.
No, that is that year, because we're, remember, we're a year behind. We don't have, I mean, that was last year's. Everything is a year behind, because we have seniors, you see what I'm saying? Now, because I don't have, the seniors aren't entered into the system in time for this report.
Okay, so then the 62% that we were working from is actually...
The year before.
From...
1415.
It'd be May 1, 15.
Yes, correct.
Two full years.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
So, these are hard, and, you know, when we pull these goal progress measures out alone, and then we've got so much jargon, you know, it's so hard to remember, you know, I'm looking this, I'm thinking, well, how did we miss the mark so bad? How did we, after all that time we spent trying to figure out, how can we assess this? And here we have something we think is 62, and we're so hopeful we'll get to 80 by 2020.
Or 94.
We're already at 94 last year.
Right. And that, I think that, I think part of that is, we are always a little behind when we get seniors graduated at this time of the year. You know, we may need to look at, maybe this was not the best time to present that data.
So I think, you know, really what we've been learning lately is, with all that work we did...
We need to have another long, or another Saturday retreat perhaps with Deputy Commissioner Crable and revisit some of this. No, no, I think, the point is, and, and, and meet with staff, because this is the third month in a row, or third report in a row, where we greatly exceeded exactly where we wanted to be, in this case, three years from now.
And I think that...
The presentation, our data didn't match that.
Right. And I think some of it too is that, you know, you're constantly growing. I mean, we, we were working on some of these goals for a while. I mean, you know, getting kids to finish that coherent sequence of courses and get that topping class. You know, with Guam and Guaca going into place and getting those things in position, that's something that we never stopped working on. I think we're seeing some fruits of our labor, even though it's still your goal.
No, I agree with you, Donna, in terms of sort of this overarching goal of where the district wanted to see CTE be. I think the concern that I have, and it sounds like Ms. T. Kell is articulating, is, you know, we spent time within the last three months really detailing what we thought were going to be goals, that we were going to meet three years from now, with performance measures, make sure we were moving towards those goals, and we may not have calibrated those accurately. We, we may be further ahead than we thought we were, and we need to readjust those. The other possibility is, we might want to go back and look at our reporting calendar, because one thing that Crable said, you know, if, or Deputy Commissioner Crable said is...
Absolutely.
If, if we have two performance measures on the same agenda, if we've hit one and there's not a whole lot to talk about, there may be another that we need to spend more time talking about. And so another thing to maybe look at is, is the reporting calendar as well as recalibrating. I'm not necessarily saying I want to spend another Saturday with all you folks, but, but I, I do think, and I'll defer to Dr. Nelson and staff in terms of, because I think you're exactly right, we've miscalculated some of these, and they do need to be adjusted.
Well, and so a report like, like this makes me want to ask questions. Why did we think this was going to be a good goal? What was our rationale? You know, and it's, it's, I don't know that that does us any good at this point. It's just obvious this one isn't helping us move the ball.
Yeah, we may just need to adopt entirely different goal progress measure.
It's a great result, but, but it's not measuring how we are on the overarching goal of 65 to 80%.
I think that to answer that question is that they haven't always been reporting this particular measure. And so when we, you know, you first see that and you say, "Oh, 63% are finishing this advanced course." That seemed on the surface to be perhaps, oh, we need to work on it, but we're, you know, when you're already working on that, you know, you're seeing the fruits of labor that have happened prior to that goal. So it's a new reporting number two as well. So that may be why, it's going to go up and down. You're not going to have a 94 every time, but I think that we'll stay within that range.
But I think, you understand the concern of going back and recalibrating those and making sure that we haven't set those too low to where there's nothing to talk about, make sure we've, we've challenged ourselves to get these, because, you know, Ms. T. Kell's exactly right. The overarching goal is, we want to have 80% of our students college or career-ready three years from now, and we need to make sure we've adopted progress measures that are going to ensure that's where we are.
Sure.
And one that's already at 94% may not help us evaluate that.
And there's also a problem with that, I mean, you?
It's dated information, right? We're not getting it until...
It's a year old. Yeah, I mean, I think, another reason rethink the progress measure, yeah.
That's how, but that's, and you know, what you took about graduation rates, you're going to be using old data. I mean, it's going to be years, it's never current.
See, I can remember at least one other instance where the board was very humble in estimating their own capacity to come up with a good goal progress measure, simply because we're just not that intimate with the inner workings of school districts, and we, I think we task staff with coming up with something. Is that a reasonable thing to do here? I mean, then it's, I'm afraid we could spend a string of Saturdays together.
No, I think you're right. I think I too.
And we're going to repeat the same mistakes.
That's a great point. No, I, I think letting staff look at this and come up with, I mean, I think some of these progress measures did come from staff, and I think getting together and looking at where, with the most recent data and seeing if we need to change those progress measures or just make them more challenging is worthwhile, and you're probably right. The first, first review of that needs to be done by staff. I'll, I'll take that correction.
Needs to be something we can get real-time information on, I feel like, or at least within this...
Agreed.
Same month, year, semester, something.
Right, so what happened in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen? And then twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen?
It's too far in the past. We could've run off the bridge by then and looking.
We'll bring it back and make it, this is a good opportunity for us to work together with the staff, so we'll bring it in July.
Other questions on anything related to Lone Star Governance, including goal progress measure three point three? All right, thank you, Ms. McKethlin.
Thank you.
Item ten B, Waco High School's restoration practices, a two-year summary. Dr. Nelson, you wanna go first?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Before we introduce our, our speakers, I did have an opportunity to visit with our Special Education Department Head along with our presenter, both of our presenters actually I've had a chance to visit with. And I just really wanted to commend them on their enthusiasm. We really have an opportunity to improve discipline practices on our campuses. It really needs to be a priority for everything we want to do with instruction. Both of the high school principals I've visited with this week believe in the program and the process that we've used to implement restorative practices. When I first heard this, I thought it was some kind of building renovation project, but no, that's not what it is. I've since learned and, so with that, I just wanted the board to know that I did have a chance to meet on this item, the special ed director, I'm sorry, I can't remember your name, but it was a very, I appreciate your enthusiasm. And we do have some conversations to have about the demographics of all the kids being suspended. And I'm not sure what our pedagogical opinions are about this, but I can assure you, this board, that I humbly have strong opinions about this. And so student outcomes don't change until adult behaviors change, as Deputy Commissioner Crable says to us all the time. And so this is just an example. We'll have another presentation on our star scores, that's another theme of mine in a minute. But with that, I'll introduce Ms. Tracy Bender and she will introduce Mr. Andre Watkins. And there's no further comments or questions, Mr. President.
Ms. Bender?
Thank you so much, Dr. Nelson and President Atkins and the board. We thank you for this chance to bring an update to you about discipline in our district and then to highlight one particular approach that's making a big difference, and that is restorative practices. I'm Trudy Bender. My position was created in 2014 to help the district address discipline, in particular disproportionality in out-of-school suspension or OSS. High OSS rates are concerning because they reflect a learning environment that's disrupted. And so it's important for us as we think about how to make progress as a district to address this issue. We have some information about how Waco ISD compares with other school districts. Hmm. Does this not work? Yeah, it's on. No? Waco ISD has the highest out-of-school suspension rates in the state. Are...
Can you believe that?
Something not working there? So if you see here, that high yellow bar on the left, when we talk about out-of-school suspension, we typically talk about rates per one hundred students. So how many incidents do we have occurring on a campus that result in an out-of-school suspension? So in 2014-15, if you see that very high yellow bar, that represents our middle school. That year, we had almost a hundred incidents per one hundred students. That means in middle school that year, we had as many incidents as we have students. You can see that since that time, our district out-of-school suspension rate has dropped significantly by forty-two percent. But we still have a lot of work to do to bring ourselves down to the average Texas OSS rate, which is about ten. Elementary OSS is particularly concerning because it's, it has a long-reaching and disproportionate impact on student achievement. Waco ISD suspends more elementary students per capita than any other district in the state by a wide margin. From a recent Texas Appleseed report, you can see here that in 2015-16, we had an elementary suspension rate of seventeen OSS actions per one hundred elementary students compared to the next highest district, which had nine. Compared with those other districts, you can see that these are the top ten worst, so we have a lot of work to do. Again, we've made significant progress. Our elementary suspension rate this year was twelve actions for every hundred students, but we still have significant work left to do. Waco ISD has a variety of behavior initiatives that have contributed to the decreases that we've seen in out-of-school suspension over the last two years. We have provided a folder for you with a lot of information about some of these different practices that are going on. And we want to highlight one in particular, which is restorative practices. Restorative is both an approach and a set of tools. It isn't a packaged program that you can buy, but it is an approach that is helping schools around the country better connect with students. The restorative approach is that relationships are at the center of school connectedness. So whenever you're talking about restorative, you're talking about relationships. And there are a particular set of tools that we use to help better connect students with each other and with their schools. Much of what we already do as a district is restorative. Conscious discipline is restorative in nature, but there is a particular set of tools that we can use to help build community. And the circle is the primary vehicle that's used. There are different kinds of circles. The primary one that's used is the community building circle. We also do brief check-in circles. We have more serious harm repair, DAP reentry circles, also one-on-one restorative language and questions with students, mediations, and respect agreements. The circle comes up the most because it's the primary vehicle that's used to build community. This is a picture of Waco ISD staff using the circle process to connect after a summer break. So if you have an opportunity to participate in a restorative circle, I would really encourage you to do that. It's one thing to hear me talk about restorative, but until you've really experienced it and sat in a circle, it's hard to imagine what that experience is really like. Right now, we have three full-time facilitators in our district. We have two that are working at Waco High School and also assisting other campuses and then one at Wiley DAP. We also have thirty-plus staff members across the district that are trained in how to use the circle process. And it can be used for anything from discussing things that are important to academic content to dealing with issues. In 2016-17, the Waco High School Restorative Center facilitated two-hundred-and-sixty-three circles and a hundred-and-twenty mediation. So you can see that they were really busy working with their students. So there are a couple of things that I just want to bring up, common concerns or questions that people have about restorative. The first is that restorative is for everyone. It's for staff, it's for students, parents, community members. It's a great vehicle for building relationships. It is not something to pull off the shelf when you have a discipline problem. The primary way that restorative should be used is to build a healthy relationship in the first place, not just to respond to a problem. The second thing is that traditional consequences don't go away, but restorative brings a different focus, and that is addressing harm that has happened. So in any out-of-school suspension incident, there's been harm that's occurred and what are we doing to repair that relationship? Maybe between two students that have been fighting or between a student and a teacher that are not getting along. And then finally, decreases in out-of-school suspension should result from a great school climate, from great instruction, not from ignoring problems and sweeping things under the carpet. That's what we don't want to see. So I would say as a district, it would be helpful for us to take a shift of focus away from how do we stop suspending kids and put it onto, how can we be really strategic and systematic about creating the kind of learning environment where academic excellence can take place? So we wanted you to hear from a student and from a parent about how restorative has helped create that kind of environment. So we've put together a brief video, it's nothing fancy, but we wanted you to hear some personal experiences. After this video, Mr. Andre Watkins, a restorative facilitator at Waco High School, will finish our presentation for tonight.
And literally right after the circle, me and that teacher were like best friends after that. I would always, I was put out of his class, but I would still go back and just talk to him and all that good stuff, so, yeah.
We want to welcome everyone to this space today. Well, we want to have a conversation today about how restorative practices have helped to impact and make positive change in our district over the last two years, you know? Hi, I'm Andre Watkins, the restorative practices facilitator at Waco High School. And I'm here with Mr. Wilson, who's the restorative practice facilitator at GL Wiley School. And I'm here with a parent, Ms. Heron, whose child achieved great success with restorative practices, which he was involved with while at the GL Wiley campus. I wanted to ask Ms. Heron for a couple of points of change that you noticed in your student when participating with restorative practices.
Well, one, his coping skills improved, being that at home, I probably told him that he needed to, you know, go tell the teacher and walk away from some incidents because they weren't worth the results of the solutions. And so while over at Restorative, they helped him to understand that that is a positive result to a solution. The walking away doesn't make you seem that you're fearful or anything like that, it's just a way to avoid being in trouble. He also learned that he can talk things out with people versus using his physical abilities. They also informed him and showed him that it was just not talk, but teachers are supportive and over at the campus, they were very supportive. If we saw them, they asked him if he was okay, how his day had went. They came by and checked on not just him, but various students throughout the day that they knew had issues with handling situations. I just really think that they were very supportive. They gave him mechanisms that helped him when he returned to the campus as his incidents decreased greatly. And as well as at home, he learned to use those mechanisms when walking with and dealing with his sister and her friends and siblings, because some situations where he would begin to get frustrated with friends that visit, with my daughter, he learned to just walk away from those things, whereas before, he felt he needed to prove a point that may not have a positive result.
Okay, so we give credit to those changes to the restorative practices that you participated in with Mr. Wilson at GL Wiley?
By far, because, you know, sometimes kids hear things from parents and it's just what your parents say, but when it's being reinforced by not just Mr. Wilson, but other staff as well, it goes a long way.
Thank you so much for your input, Ms. Heron.
Having somebody on campus that you can trust like Ms. Nunes is, is a great thing, you know? She doesn't judge you and she always makes time for you and, yeah, it's a great thing.
What would you tell a friend about the restorative center or restorative practices?
If you are ever going through anything, anything, whatever it is, you can always come here and have somebody who will listen to you.
How has having a restorative center and restorative practices at Waco High School impacted you this school year?
Well, when I first moved here, I was in a really bad place and I think Mr. Love introduced me to you. And after talking with you, getting some things off my chest, I guess that helped me came out, come out of my shell, you know? And I had this problem with a teacher early in the year and we were not getting along at all. And you mentioned a circle and literally right after the circle, me and that teacher were like best friends after that. I would always, I was put out of his class, but I would still go back and just talk to him and all that good stuff, so, yeah.
President Atkins, Dr. Nelson, I would humbly like to submit something to you. May I bring this to you and put this in your hand? Thank you.
I've read it a thousand times, so I'm intimately familiar with the words on the paper. There was a young man who was frequently suspended for having his hood on in class and for sleeping and being defiant when corrected on those actions, which we can all agree are not conducive with the learning environment. Being out of dress code, having your countenance covered in the classrooms, not only a safety issue, but it's a, a social movement that shows that I'm shutting the rest of the world out and focused on myself. And in the past, as was our common practice, as dictated by the data, a student that exhibited those kind of behaviors was suspended, sent home and told to have a self-reflective moment away from the community. And somehow that was to correct this behavior and they were to come back brand new. That is what us learned people were accustomed to doing. Well, on that piece of paper, it says, "I didn't want to tell you, but my stepdad made me, my little sister, my brother, and my mom sleep in the car last night." That's what that paper says. I'll never throw that paper away. I was a skeptic of restorative practices when Mr. Love told me about it because I just didn't believe in sitting around in a circle and talking about kitties and rainbows and folding origami, you know? I'm, I'm from a military household and I myself am a military veteran. I believe definitely in doing what you have to do, when you have to do, not because thou liketh it, but because thou hast to do it. But on my participation in my first restorative practices training, I witnessed a room full of adults who didn't know each other from a can of paint, form a semblance of family, and come together on one accord with changing the world around us, not by doing something earth-shattering, but by doing something we all learned to do in kindergarten, which is share, respect each other's talking space, and respect each other's person. Now, what we did with that young man in that paper before that day was that we would disrespect his person by not asking him why he had his hood on. We would not ask him why he was tired in class. We would not ask him why academics was not his primary focus and function. But until that restorative practices center at Waco High was open and that young man had a place not to go straight to an AP, not to go straight to a behavior specialist, but to come to a place where he could plainly express himself, I asked him if he would like to talk to me. He said, "No, I don't want to talk." I asked him if he would like a marker board and a dry erase marker to draw something. He said, "No, I don't want to draw." He said, "I just need a piece of paper and a pencil." I supplied the young man with a piece of paper and a pencil and I gave him some space and sat behind my desk. He wrote that brief note, folded it just like you gave it, I gave it to you, and he gave it to me. And all this time, we'd been punishing that child for being in an abusive situation. He came to us hurt and we hurt him again. And we prided ourself on that. Our school is under control because those children that come to our school with these problems, we deal with them expediently. And with all the full measure of power that here we have invested in us as being the disciplinarians of this place. In short, we acted like school was a giant that came out of the, out of the woods to visit the townspeople. We did not realize that a school is nothing but a reflection of the people. We ourselves are custodians of our people's most precious resource and we had forgotten that. And that's how we begun to lead the state in suspensions. Restorative practices, starting with staff and matriculating through our students into their families and out into the communities, is a restoration of us being in our rightful place as custodians and guardians of the community through education, not only academically but experientially. If we ourselves are accomplished, which we are, if we ourselves in this room carry ourselves as responsible citizens and members of this community, which we do, it is then our duty not only to provide academic excellence as experienced by the other programs we've heard from tonight... heard from tonight, that are far exceeding goals that were set last year, but it is our responsibility to do the same for our experiential learning to our young people. Time is far spent, so I will leave you with a number. Waco High, forty-six percent decrease in out-of-school suspensions in two years of restorative practices. Forty-six percent. If we had forty-six percent in decrease in waste at a food plant, whoever was in charge of that plant would now be a district-level manager. Forty-six percent less students were sent away from our doors because of issues that we learned how to handle as capable adults. So no, this is not a program. This is not a trick. It is not Gandalf's staff. It is not Harry Potter's wand. What it is, is hard work from people who care about what they're doing and have a passion in a heart for teaching our children. And by the way, I don't want to get too far into your star, but we had, what, fifteen? What, a double-digit increase in math scores? Double-digit increase in math scores because we had hyenas in seats in math class. Due to our ISS decreasing from a room that could hold forty students to being in a room that only holds ten. That's all I have. Thank you so much, sir.
Are there any questions from the board? Ms. Bender, could you get to Ms. Gonzalez a copy of your PowerPoint presentation so we can get that to all the board members?
In fact, I think you already have it, Ms. Gonzalez, but I'll send you another copy. Absolutely.
If we can get that forwarded to all the board members, I think that would be fantastic. Thank you, ma'am. Andre, Mr. Watkins, I first heard you speak, I don't know if you remember, a couple of years ago, we had a lunch meeting of all the district employees who were involved at some element of Prosper Waco. That was a little over two years ago, and you were there and sat on the back row, and I was as humbled by your passion that afternoon as I was this evening, and I appreciate all the work you're doing for the students at Waco High.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And I heard you spoke for us at the NAACP also. Sir, I am very proud, and I salute you, and I learned more in this few minutes listening to you talk about, I've been hearing about this, I even talked to Mr. Love about this, but I never really understood what it was all about. So I commend you, I commend Waco High, Mr. Love, and all of the people there, because of the fact that Waco High now is the place to go to. Y'all are doing a great job. You should be commended. Thank you.
Thank you, folks. We'll move on to item 10C, which is the presentation on 2017 index one STAR and end-of-course scores. Dr. Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. President. So we just heard a presentation on how we're leading the state in suspensions. We're also going backwards on our academic achievement, and I share Mr. Watkins' passion. I know it's not an issue of effort, but we're not getting the job done. And, Sarah, can you put up the chart? Can you put the chart up?
No, I did not. I did, the full presentation will be with August, when the final scores come out.
Oh, okay.
You have the copies in there.
Does the board have this chart?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, we should be showing this to the public. I'm not sure why we're not, because I have it, and I thought it was, you know, but that's fine, my fault. But I'm just going to summarize this in the interest of time, because as, Dr. Ellis?
I'm sorry?
Doctor?
No, no.
As Mrs. Ellis says, we'll have a final report when the data is cleaner with the state, and it'll include ratings and all of that. But, you know, the members of the board can see this chart, and it's kind of like suspending your kids. I mean, either way, we've got to create this model of continuous improvement, and it's everything from discipline to learning, to fine arts, to athletics. We got to get better. And under our watch, as adults, I just can't tolerate this. And I firmly believe our kids are better than this.
Absolutely.
And I believe it's our job to change in a way that pulls out, see, the fact that we can't show this to the public makes me feel like we're trying to hide it, and we're not. And members of the board, I'm glad the board gets to see it first. And just know, the chart is supposed to be green. Not supposed to be any, I can show you a chart just like this, where ninety-eight percent of the kids are poor, and there's only one red number on the whole chart. Or two. Yeah, you're right. Thank you for the clarification, Mr. President. Whatever, you understand? And so it's not an indictment. I know Mrs. Ellis, her entire team stand ready to work together and really force this issue. And just like restorative practices forces people to come to the table and share and have conversations about what accountability looks like, I'm prepared to do that as well. But this is the kind of data that keeps us up at night, and we will start, we will come with another presentation next month, because one of the issues is awareness. And we have a lot of work to do, but I'm confident that together we will climb this mountain, and we will create schools where we consider the whole child. And this is not, for me, I'm not motivated by test scores. I'm motivated about creating opportunities for students. And the reason why people don't like to talk about reading scores or writing scores is probably because your kids can read and write. But if you're here and your kids are going backwards, I hear parents of Waco screaming for help, and they're demanding quality schools. So that's all I'm going to say. I know you don't need a soapbox, Mr. President, members of the board. I'm glad you get to see this, and we'll come with a detailed presentation in July and August and September.
Yeah, Ms. DeKalb.
When you come back in July, you know, when you look at, you know, such a mixed bag and so much data, I'm always curious, and it seems like, I just, you know, you see some, there are some trends, big, you know, big, huge drops.
Yes.
And I would like to hear what staff's thoughts are.
Rationality for that.
Yeah, how could you have thirty percent drop? Anyway, just some information about some thoughts on what we're seeing, rather than just looking at raw numbers.
Yes, ma'am, we'll absolutely include that in our presentation. For the record, there's some areas, I'm looking at seventh-grade reading, seventh-grade math. Hey, that's what we're talking about.
Yes, sir.
Just keep it moving forward. I would like to acknowledge, and I don't even know her name, but the principal at JH Hines is one of the highest-performing principals in the Waco Independent School District. And you go to writing, fourth grade, we had two schools improve in writing, Provident Heights and JH Hines. Everyone else went backwards. And so if the JH Hines kids can improve their writing by seventeen points, then everybody's going to improve their writing by seventeen points.
That's exactly right, and that's Ms. Julie Saeppa.
So I know that we have some hard-working people, and not just elementary, but secondary as well. I'm confident, I don't want you to think this, I'm trying to present that the sky is falling, but there's not a state of critical urgency on this
Yes, sir.
that needs to happen. And it's going to require intense focus, and just like it's going to require on, I want to go back to discipline real quick. I'm not suggesting this, but I know school districts that have policies that are approved by the board that say no suspensions at elementary. Now, I believe at secondary, you got to have different little plan of action, six through twelve, and I love what I'm hearing on restorative practices, but while we're leading the state in elementary suspensions, that's an adult issue. They just don't want to deal with the kid. And so all of this is keeping me up at night, and we have a lot of work to do, so we'll come back with this.
All right. Other questions, comments, anything else to be added?
No, I just, you know, anytime you see red on the page, it is not a good sign. We've had a lot of issues going on this year. We've hired Region Twelve to come in, we've done a complete curriculum audit to make sure the components are in place. The Curriculum Instruction Department controls the content of what is put out there. We use Texas Resources to them as the bank. Right now, we still have total autonomy as far as the how of that and the instructional pieces, and we're trying to move that to a more consistent plan to where evidence-based, research-based strategies are being used, and student evidence, student work product must become our focus to be able to see what those students are actually capable of doing, and does it match the rigor of the TEES in which they have to learn?
Ms. Sykes?
Will we be receiving a report on the curriculum audit?
Yes, sir.
When will that be?
When would you like it, in July as well?
Whenever you can have it prepared.
We can.
Let's look at the agenda, make sure we don't overload with reports on a given month. We don't want to be here too late, but once we get through the budget and the review of the scores, we'll get the curriculum audit report.
Okay. All right, anybody else? Thank you, Ms. Ellis. Mr. Geetzen, we're ready for announcements.
Thank you, Mr. President and trustees. As we all know, it is summer, we've got a bit less going on district-wide. If you're looking to have some cool fun this weekend or next, you're invited to see the latest collaboration between our wonderful Fine Arts Department and the Waco Civic Theater, folks. They are presenting their version of the Tony Award-winning play Hairspray the next two weekends. It started tonight at Waco High's Richfield Performing Arts Center. Their evening performances Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights at 7:30, and a matinee on Sunday at 2:30, same schedule next weekend. And more than a dozen students from six different districts, including Waco ISD, are part of that ensemble, and we hope to see a lot of our viewers there. Tonight's also the graduation ceremonies for seven university high students and one student from Carver Middle School, from the Waco Police Department's Junior Police Academy. They got to do a lot of the same things police officers do the last couple of weeks. Most of them were part of the Law and Criminal Justice Track at A.J. Moore Academy. Our Waco High cheerleaders came home with a long list of awards from the National Cheerleader Association camp, so three cheers for that group. June 30th, the TEA's new STAR test report card system goes live online, giving parents an unprecedented look at how their students performed on that STAR test, and even how they answered each question. And of course, we will honor America week after next for the July Fourth holiday. The district will actually be closed from Friday, June 30th until Wednesday, July 5th. If you are traveling for the Fourth, please buckle up and be safe.
Mr. Geetzen, thank you. And we have a staff member who has some exciting news. Do you want to share that, Dr. Nelson?
Absolutely. It is a privilege and an honor to announce that Mr. Rick Hartley has been selected as a lone finalist for Superintendent of Schools position in the Shepherd Independent School District, and we're happy to have him.
And any other announcements from the board? All right, yes, Mr. Manning?
We will be going to Carver Park Baptist Church Sunday, 10:30, all board members.
This weekend?
Carver Park.
Carver Park Baptist Church.
We're going to start that up again, and we're going to start this Sunday, correct?
Yeah.
We'll do it the four Sundays?
Do it the four Sundays.
All right. Board members are invited to join us there. Any other announcements? All right, here are no objections. We'll stand adjourned.